And. Okay, and have we heard from the council people or the commissioners who are not here?
Yeah. And that and some people.
As well as Joe.
As well as Joe. So everyone who is going to be here is here. Thank you. Um, with that, we do have a quorum and it is a little after six o'clock and we are recording the meeting. So I will call to order the April fourth Planning Commission meeting and I will. I will ask Tyler if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I literally just divide the United States of America. We're probably just hands one nation.
Thank you, Tyler. We will do welcomes. And what we will do, because we do have a hybrid meeting this evening. Um, I am remote and we do have commissioners at the dais. Um, I will start with the dais and ask the planning commission members to introduce themselves to our audience. And Tyler, we can start with you.
Thanks, Tyler. It was. Paul Farnum, Planning Commissioner.
Thank you. And then, um, I too am a planning commissioner, Beck Ashby, and I chair the planning commission. And then we will let staff introduce themselves.
Nick Bond, the Community Development Director. Here, I'm also remote tonight, having attended a conference earlier today on planning.
To this senior planner, I apologize for some of my internet connection is not working, so I will be suspending on Zoom.
Okay, with that, we have a somewhat light agenda this evening. We do have two presentations, but we always start our meeting with a public comment. If there's anyone either in council chambers or a Zoom attendee who wanted to give a comment to the Planet Commission, now would be the appropriate time to do that. We would ask you to step to the microphone and introduce yourself.
There are no members of the hall, just presenters.
Just presenters that are there. We do have one attendee. Is that a presenter also?
No.
Okay, but they have not raised their hand.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, it, because I'm remote and who I can't see is Dave. I would ask the other two, if you want to speak, if you would use the raise your hand feature, um, then I can tell and um, Dave can do something to indicate to me that he would like to speak during our discussion periods. Okay, thank you. Um, with that, we um, would like to approve our minutes from the March seventh meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
All motions approved minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Thank you. So the minutes from the March seventh meeting have been, um, there's been a motion to approve them with a second. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. Is there anyone who would be voting against the motion to approve the minutes? I will repeat that for a second time. Is there anyone who would be voting, uh, to not approve the minutes? With that, the minutes stand approved with unanimous consent. And let me just offer a explanation. The Open Public Meetings Act um, requires us to allow the public to know how everyone votes. And we're in a, when we're in a hybrid like this, it's hard if we just call for a question and people raise their hands. It's, it's difficult to see how people um, have voted. That's why I use the unanimous consent when we can. And if someone, and they're always welcome to not vote in favor of a motion, then we would do a roll call vote. I give that explanation to the viewing public and to our commissioners. Um, with that, we do have two presentations this evening. And the first one is the State of the City and the Honorable Rob Patonsu, our mayor, will be giving that. So Rob, I will go ahead and and turn the presentation over to you.
Thanks, Ben. So I, uh, I annually do the State of the City address and Nick and I were talking about this address half a dozen times around community service clubs and other organizations that I plan to uh, it's planned for last month that I was going to give it to the city council, but our retreat was postponed by a month. So it's in the next next week, well, the city council will actually see this and it's really a a look back at 2022. And uh, looking at 2023 and beyond is where the city's overall projects we have. And Nick and I were talking about this and why don't we give this presentation to the planning commissioners, they're involved in where the roadmap that we're trying to make for our community. So uh, so with that, this is our 2023 State of the City reports. You'll see it's slide there. So, uh, the, uh, last year, we, uh, remember the beginning of 2022, we were in conflict with the, is that county over Vetters Park? Uh, there was a large encampment there. Uh, depending on who you talk to, there was thirty to a hundred people there. Uh, somewhere in the middle is probably where it was at, but um, we took that and there's a spring there, there's municipal well that's in there. It, you know, and I personally believe that parks are sacred in our community and should be for our family directory. And um, that's not how Kent County is operating park. And the county, we forced the county to uh, clean up the encampment and park. The county approached the city and said, uh, would you, the city, while that county park is in within the city and the county asked us, would you like to take Veterans Park? And it sounded like a good idea. Yeah, but unlike some communities, we don't have a Parks and Rec Division that's funded by a dedicated funding source, uh, which would be a property tax. And, uh, before we took that, particularly taken that to the ballot, we felt it was important to survey our community, find out if that should be our priority to, because Veterans, Veterans Park is bigger than all of our other parks combined and our arts, uh, activities are funded out of our general fund, which is a thing a lot of dollars that our streets get paid with and our police officers fund. So we did a survey and we asked the community this past year, what should be our priority? And unfortunately, there were five choices at park payment and five. And everybody wants parts, but they don't want to find ours. So that's why we, we asked the community, what they told us was two things are most important to us. One is crime and then then police officers. The number two was traffic. So we put that to heart. And uh, this past year, uh, we hired six police officers. We created a fifth sergeant position to provide more supervision over our police officers with changes that happen like uh, related to these police officers. Uh, we launched a social media site for our police department. We implemented body worn cameras in our police department at the end of last years. And I don't know if you, maybe you saw this, but we had one point thirty-five Derrwood vessels sitting out here in Sclater. And it was, it is actually TNR's response, our natural resource responsibility to deal with that. Um, but they like any other state agencies and don't have funding or the the manpower to do that. So we made that a priority. We had takes two police officers, um, to man our marine patrol. And it is, there's extensive documentation process we have to go through to determine that that boat hasn't moved and they're required to move. It's five miles and they can only be there. Ben, Ben, you're more an expert on this than I am. I think it's every, they can be there thirty days, sixty days.
It's something I, I, off the top of my head, I couldn't, couldn't help with that, Rob.
They're in the same spot, uh, for a fixed period of time and then they're required to move. And many of these boats weren't operational, they, you know, likely discharging sewer and sound. And so we, uh, went, went about issuing citations visiting those boats and we see eight boats of the thirty-five, the others stopped a light and left. Then we got phone calls from Paul Farnum, Danger Charlie, what are you guys doing up the border? Sure, we're at work. So, uh, of that, so we went and so there's a program with state, so we seized those boats, the destroyed those boats and then sought reimbursement from the state into the two of a hundred thousand dollars to direct the destruction of those vessels. But it's vastly different out there in the, in the body of water out there. And I think it's the right thing to do. The problem, challenge for that is putting those two officers on the boat. And, you know, they aren't forced to traffic, they're not responding to criminal other criminal activity. But we felt it was important to do and it was just a life of our community out there. Also, in this, in our 2023 budget, the beginning of this year, we added two of the police officers. I thought I'd go to the next slide. You'll see the six officers that we added, uh, in 2026, it was past year. Um, and the top left corner is our new deputy chief. Now, these aren't all new positions. We've been, as long as I've been mayor, we've had openings in our police department. It's not, um, our situation isn't really, is that you're better off than most of us. Uh, we had one point last year, we were down the six, there's our eighty-two. Uh, it's not where we want to be, but I haven't sent it to place. Um, and I am excited about, uh, the quality and people that we're creating into our police department. Uh, you know, with the police performance that happened as a result of George Floyd's situation and other uh, tragedies that happened in our nation. Our legislature and the wisdom took a lot of authority away from our police officers and our more senior police officers to decide it's time to retire. Um, and I can't blame them, you know, for to be lumped into a basket with, um, some of the officers that, that weren't important, they think, um, you know, probably hurts. And so as a result, maybe we had a number of officers retired. We didn't refund our police department like some other communities have. It was just to believe that, um, many of our more senior officers decided it's time to retire. So next slide, Josie, and uh, you guys are aware that we, we conducted comprehensive planning processes. We did two significant processes in twenty-two. Uh, and you guys were involved in these. One was our comprehensive parks plan update and our new park impact fee for the city. That's what we have. I think we're the top five in, uh, the state that the amount of our park impact fee that's developed, community doesn't seem to like that. But on the other hand, uh, it hasn't, it doesn't seem to have slowed down too much out there. And so we need to be conscious of that. You know, we want, we want to help the economy. But on the other hand, uh, as our community becomes denser and denser, it's important that we have quality parks and open space. And this is one, one of the few tools that the legislature allows us, uh, to, uh, fund capital for those parks. The other is that we went through an extensive process to change our water, uh, to a consume our water building system to a consumption model. And we had tiers previously, and now you have, we have a base fee. And if you if you're a low user, okay, so there was a big difference. Uh, because you need to be able to cover our costs, our stored water utilities, our protocol enterprise funds. And the cost of those utilities are borne by the rates that, that, uh, that funded. And, uh, the with our consumption model, the high-end users will pay more below the user. So it's a sense conservation. And, uh, water is becoming more and more precious, getting water rights. Developing wells is extremely expensive and so we need to manage those resources efficiently as we can. So the, the fact here, we completely revamped our, our water, uh, building system to, uh, let's call it an assumption model. Twenty twenty-two, we also received numerous grants that they, uh, during my time as the mayor, we pursued all kinds of, uh, grants. That's how we funded the Tremont project and and in particular, and these are the grants that we received in 2022, the purpose of which is we got a federal appropriation thanks to, uh, Congressman Chalmers for the CLO rise project out here on A Streets. We're, we're planning for establish the project at the bank's headquarters, community center. And in a future project with a parking structure and residential towers, well, that section of town. But and when we have king tide events and raining is underwater, it would be foolish to build these new buildings and I've not addressed that. So uh, that million dollars will be performed with design work. We also pursued and received two point two million dollars, well, it's likely a four million dollars project. Actually, we built the A Street. So from guy here right outside City Hall, all the Frederick Street, we're going to raise A Street a foot and a half. We're going to put a new storm infrastructure and redirect it to an asphalt that's hotter than the one that they currently go, so it goes out to. So what happens with these king tides? All of our storm water is coming off the hill. And if, you know, when this outfall is underwater, there's a physical water to go. So it's coming down and it's like a bubble and out of our storm rains downtown. Um, so it only lasts for a couple of hours when the tide goes out, but a lot of damage can happen to the businesses downtown. We also, uh, pursued and it's subject to, uh, the state's budget. Uh, but, uh, we should be receiving a five hundred thousand dollar grant for shoreline restoration. Uh, related to community center projects would be lot of banks property. We bought, we would be able to wait on replacement in seawall. Uh, when, when we did have you here coming in and look at seawall and likely this bank building is called, probably hold up the seawall. And when we take the bank building down, uh, likely the first big storm would take the seawall out and then put our main community center together. So, um, we need to replace seawall. We're, we're going to be tearing the bank building. We're stepping back from shoreline, whether you do shore restoration, that's a slide I'll go to you later. Um, on the progress on that. We also received this, this year, uh, a six hundred fifty thousand dollar application approval board grant for pedestrian improvements near Cedar Heights. Uh, our father's thought that it'd be, that someday that that will be a four lane road um, through there. And so we've got that short, uh, section, four lane road in front of in a school zone. It's a great place for the past people and the thing, folks that get it, they're the idea. Um, so we're going to put that boat on the diet and, you know, bike lanes, you know, crossing improvements and we got a, a grant uh, to fund that. We also have a difficult ground grant to tie those improvements into Sydney, like elementary and down to Ruby Creek of the new apartments that are down along there. So we intend to, um, to improve the vesting and bicycle access for students, uh, in that area. We also received, this is nine dollars, seven hundred thousand dollars in transportation improvement work for phases three, two and three for Tremont. And that is the intersection at, at the top of Bohart and then Sydney and Tremont. And likely outcomes from that will be that, uh, four roundabouts along there. Because roundabouts we have on Tremont move traffic exceptionally well and they didn't show points and traffic lights. And so and then the last is we, uh, received a grant. We did some grind outs and patches on Old Flute Road. Um, and it's banding on the road, but we were able to, we got a grant to complete overlay. So, you know, right now we've got our patchwork, the county's nice, we set the road and then it goes back to the city. It was fast one patchwork. So it'll be all nice, smooth pavement from Highway sixteen all the way to McCormick's Boulevard. And then, next slide, Josie. Um, so the, the second thing that our city told us that we need to do more, fun, traffic improvements. We craft it at Bethel or, or is a priority for the city, but it's more than a fifty million dollar project. Tremont in itself was twenty million dollars and that's a heavy lift for a city our size to, to tackle a project that is not possible for us to do a project more than fifty million dollars. So we, uh, the council was deliberating early last year about a ballot measure, uh, to, because we have car tabs that fund street preservation maintenance. There's a second tool, there's a couple of different tools, or one of the tools that we can also cover transportation that it benefits a district is the one, is a subs expansion. And we were trying to figure out which project fit that. And we thought it was going to be, it was Bethel Phase One, which is a, a roundabout at Salmonberry and Bethel and Blueberry and Bethel and a complete street in the middle of it. So sidewalks, street lights, uh, median down the middle of it. And, um, while we were in that process, the legislature last year, um, modified state law that we could pass a one-tenth measure council technically first time we go to the voters. So that generates nearly ten million dollars over ten years. And so the council did that. So we're deciding right now of Bethel Phase One. We hope in two more years, uh, in 2025, it will be an extraction of Bethel Phase One. And we can get, we're relieved to this rapid inflation. We should have enough money. But if we don't, we might have to look for some additional sources to augment that. It's, I believe it's about a ten million dollar project on that road. And then, you know, I, when I, uh, was a council member, we found it was typical for us to find a couple hundred thousand dollars a year for, for three preservation payments. And with our growth in our community and the additional sales tax dollars that we're getting, we have more revenue and the council agrees with me that we need to fund feeding our streets, maintenance of our streets. So this financial budget, we actually put one point three million dollars to do three reservation. And I'm very proud of that. It's, uh, we're, we're going to watch and admit it for, uh, for our roots in our community. So next I'm going to talk a little bit about, uh, our 2023 budget, highlights from that and capital. Uh, where we put some, uh, for our human resources and then I thought already we would, uh, street preservation. It's Josie for the next slide. Are, we have a very ambitious next two years, it's twenty eight projects, only nearly forty-one million dollars. And, uh, you can see the categories that they're in. And Jesse, or Josie, if you go to the next slide, I'll, I'll talk about some of those biggest projects. So uh, biggest one that we should be out to bid here in the next sixty days is the Marina Pump Station. It's the, where that restoration structure on the waterfront is underneath that are a bunch of pumps and a vault that is become functionally obsolete and it's really at its maximum capacity. That gray structure on the waterfront of it was at one point our sewer treatment, really didn't do much in the way of treatment. So, and so all that sewer of the city from McCormick Woods, everywhere the city actually travels to this point on our waterfront. And then it heads to Annapolis and Fort Wayne. And so we are going to be rebuilding that pump station, uh, with, it'll have larger vaults for redundancy, uh, modern exiting the pumps. And we're going to have a, you know, um, a better at rest, so it'll be down our waterfront. So this is about an eighteen million dollar project. It'll take us nearly two years um, to build. So the summer, you're probably going to skip a brick and a hole, uh, in the ground and it's going to affect car shows and other festivals. Um, but it's just necessary improvements we need to make. We're, we hope to go out in this summer on the two roundabouts on Bethel and Lincoln and Mitchell and Lincoln. Unfortunately, or fortunately, the, the, uh, schools, um, district office and their transportation facilities is shifted to them. And we have to do those roundabouts in summer months or, or have them substantially complete, or we will uh, adversely affect the school district's ability to get their buses in and out of there. So we had some storm water. Some regulations changed on us during our design that, uh, sets back a little bit and is whether or not we can get, uh, out in this summer or not. If we can, then it will be next summer that, that those two roundabouts are built. So those will be our two birthday roundabouts, uh, Bethel. And then we've got the two additional ones by a couple of years later. This Friday, I believe we're about to bid on City Hall reskin projects. City Hall's twenty-one years old now. Um, our roof is to the end of its life. Our windows are well done on their life and they're failing. Our siding, uh, is integrated. If you, if you're blessed with an office with windows on it, it's a great view. But it's cold because the windows aren't very good in this building. So we are, it's a reskin project. The clock tower, TV is for tours someday up there. It's, um, it leaks, there's a big, there's a big bucket in there with a salt pump. Can you take a garden hose and put it out to the roof? So, and all four of those clock cases are individual clocks. And they've got a little tiny motor and a pin that drives that great big arm. It's a maintenance nightmare. And one, keeping them all at the same time on them. And then the pins and the motors. So anyway, so the clock tower is going to be, it'll look the same. But it's going to be a digital image. And, uh, so we'll be able to control it with a computer and break savings and maintenance operation. We're going to put LED lighting in the building. We're going to get ahead of the governor's fossil fuel matter. Our boilers probably have ten more years of life than them. We would end up spending about three quarters of a million dollars updating our, our heating system, uh, to be able to work properly and efficiently. The problem with that is then ten years from now, we're likely to replace our boilers. And those, the, the improvements we would make, we won't be compatible with the commercial heat loss that we need. So we would spend three quarters of a million dollars now, north of a million dollars ten years from now. So we're going to get out in front of that and, and go to a heat pump, a heat pump, a heat pump system, get away from you and remove our gas-fired boilers. We're going to put a solar canopy over the police, uh, parking lot. And we're going to bid, the estimates by the weekend will generate seventy percent of our heat demand for electricity from that solar array to heat and power the buildings. So the piece for itself and its life and, uh, and it is great. Um, we're, and we're going to, believe it or not, this carpet is twenty-one years old. So it's pretty good shape, but, and this room's never been painted in twenty-one years. Other than individual offices, that's, we've taken really good care of it. But it's time to replace the carpet and paint the place. And then we've got three areas that are going to do a modest remodel in the police department because our police uh, give our forces role. And so we need to accommodate that. And then the customer service counter over here at the court and finance, our, our PDA compliance. So we're going to review the customer service, submit that, uh, memory disabilities, that's clients. So uh, we have, we, we hope, uh, but then I don't think we're going to get to bid and refer construction this summer, but likely next spring, the, the next segment of pathway to take us to from West Bay down to the atmosphere. We're, we're required all of the overwater homes. We've got some parking stalls that are on this, this to acquire as pipelines. And then we'll have our right-of-way base stack, uh, uh, wrapped up and able to go construction. We've got numerous well projects. Uh, we've got a, um, well, loving construction yard that kind of McCormick Woods. We want to replace the treatment. We want to replace the treatment uh system here of seven, which is the bottom of the, where it's all are. And our new sewer lift stations have something called a SCADA system that allows our public works department to monitor. Um, these sewer lift stations remotely and, and give off alarms uh to them so we can dispatch that. And our older sub custom pump stations don't, and so we're at risk that one of those. Um, fails, generator doesn't kick on to have a sewer filled, so we're gonna spend. Uh, in more than half a million dollars on modernizing controls all of our older sewer lift stations so that they can all be monitored. And control remotely. And we've got a pump station out of, you know, sure in Sydney and then another one in the city south area that where we have uh low water pressure. So. Personal, it's been, it's probably be added, uh, you know, we've got a tremendous amount of growth and so we've added an additional engineer. To the uh engineering department, we've added another additional person to the code enforcement. I mean, homelessness, RVs and all kinds of fun stuff out there that. Assistants complaining about what we need to be able to respond to, so we're out, uh, to add it to the code enforcement department. Uh, we added a halftime officer to the community development because of the. Amount of, number of applications and activity they have and we added two police officers, uh, to the police department. And then just see, so we've got, and then I talked a little bit about the pavement. Uh, preservation, we also have a bridge at London and every few years we need to bring in expensive piece equipment. And swirls over the side, respects the bottom of the bridge to make sure that it's still safe, but. But you're going to hear things about, I think it come down, so that, that's scheduled to happen this biennium. And we'll also continue to make improved investments in our sidewalks. Uh, particularly older and part of town that doesn't have, uh, a line ramps and so. You, we did a, a number of those ramps that associated with the project on Sydney Avenue that's matched here where we got a signal. And this major projects in the future that we're planning for, I talked a little bit about faith, that'll base one. Uh, that's in design right now, we've got a seal product, price project up here, we've got the community center coming, the, the, the banks. Uh, should be breaking ground about a year on their building as soon as they can move into their building, we can tear their building down, start a community center. Shoreline restoration project and then. When the Ruby Creek area, town everybody knows for Ruby Creek, etc. in the city, um. We, we need another sewer lift station out there and sewer lines that are in that road are. Uh, at capacities, we need a new force payment always see your heights, while I talked about all of those. Pedestrian improvements and we'll certainly get the trigger by putting new blacktop down, the last thing we wanna do is do this. You know, putting the blacktop down and then two or three years, not long, and kind of trench down the, down the middle of the road. For many a drive over, so we're, we're going to, as we do these road improvements. Try to put in the sewer vein in pieces, uh, so that we don't come back later. And I'm really excited about the community events. The, uh. We've got, uh, gosh, millions of dollars from the, the public service district fund this. Through my partnership of the library district, um, and we've been, you know, I've been here since nineteen seventy. And we've been talking about. Redevelopment or downtown since I was a kid a- and, and we're finally, I think, going to have our first project. The bank's headquarters, this event center, and I'm really, uh, really excited about it, so. This is the front door is in a re, you'll enter from the Orchard Street Plaza side, the Orchard Street Plaza, we, the. Well, I'll show you here in a minute, got another slide, so. This is the coming in A Street, uh, when you're coming into town with seaward community and then from the front of the building you see unity. Which I think is pretty powerful, we've got a, a retail space on the ground floor there, they'll help us, but we will lease and. Community centers don't need one. Um, so, uh, it'll help us offset some of the costs associated of, of adding this center. And next slide, Jesse, so this is the, uh, the decks that, I guess we don't have to slide showing. The relationship to the bank event, but we initially had a pair of decks that looked like peers that went out. And as far as our design advanced, we realized we didn't have as much properties. But we thought we had, and so we were really working hard to stay on. Property we purchased and off of the TNR lease plans. So the TNR lease plan, if we provide open space and, and public access to the water, we did that for free. If we put a building on it, park cars on it, we have to pay commercial lease rates for it. So that's part of it, we moved the building back purposely and, and once right into two, because we're gonna. Restore the shoreline, create access to the water. And it's gonna reduce our costs to cooperate with this, so. This is, this gives you an idea of what the new deck configuration would look like on the water side. Next slide. And so this, this slide shows what the shoreline will likely look like, we've got an overwater structures. That will allow us to put two twenty five forty uh tents out over the water, so that, that wedding event or. Fundraiser could be out on the water at night's day, and you see on the left side of the convention. Where we're applying for a halfway, and so at low tide, you're gonna be able to actually access uh beach and water. Uh, here, so, next slide, Jesse. And here we go, this is the image I was referring to, so you can see. The top of the picture, the, the Marina pump station project, that will kick all this off, to the right of the image is. The banks, the headquarters, and then the community event center, and then the future uh mixed use project that we're hoping for across the street. And next slide, uh, this is another grant that, uh, we hold. That the state let us like their funds, RCO, the way we want to see it funded would be. The Jibbins Sports Court and we had, so used in our community. This petition to us that they, Nick knows about this more than I do, was that it's boost ball, it's like speed soccer. Uh, and we, it was that left court is the back, the basketball court. And we'll make it usable for this speed soccer and basketball, and then the two tent courts. Will be uh converted, but we did a fantasy where we resurfaced them and they're tent courts. And we get four pickleball courts out of it, so pickleball is very popular in the city. The, uh, four hundred thousand dollar project. I think we got three hundred thousand of the grant, four hundred fifty thousand dollar project, and, and so we, we're looking at. We need about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and the Morning Rotary Club here. In Port Orchard is taking this on to raise the hit from a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, for the city's brand match, uh, to make this project a reality. So, and then lastly, I just, you know. We have phenomenal management team here at the city and all of them are, are leaders in their. Field and every one of our, our directors, uh. Is that in some way in their peer group, uh, or outside agencies. That, those connections from whether it's the Association of Walking Cities where I am currently the president. Or the executive board, a huge town regional council, where I also serve. Those relationships are how we get other people's money, whether it be federal or state. Because there aren't enough resources in the central community to solve that all or the community center or the sea level rise. We need our, the partnership of the state and the federal government and. Many times by our peers sit on those corners and make those decisions, so. So it's good to have a relationship, you know, uh, that, that, those outside agencies. And then lastly, just questions and, uh, what questions you guys have and then. There are a couple of things. Um, myself, you know, there's a housing bill that I think is this disaster, the bait and bill, the scimitar bill. That will change all of our single family lots to four complexes. Um, we initially thought that we would be exempt, so we did twenty five thousand people, but because our. Our city of us, uh, city of Birmingham. On Old Clifton. We did. Brought into it. Because of, uh, because we were connected to Birmingham, so we won't be exempt from that, we just learned here in the last eight or two. So we're in opposition to that, there are many communities, it, it just, we don't belong to me, that's why we have. You guys and that's why we have a city council and that's why we do housing action lines and we go through a process in our community to. You know, we, we all need to do our part to solve the housing crisis, but we ought to be able to decide where it's. The right places to put that additional density in this place, and I think in this places where there's transit access, because we can't. Handle a lot, you know, that many more cars out in McCormick Woods or in other residential settings. And we wanna be denser by, around Ruby Creek and the, the transit uh park right there in our town. Somebody can walk out their door, get to their job, shipyard or downtown Seattle. So I think it's very problematic when the legislature beats our local control away and, and. Close this place upon us, but I'm just, I'm gonna ask so honestly. But, uh, questions you guys have back?
Yeah, I have some comments and questions, but I would like to open it up to other commissioners first. I don't know whether Tyler or Paul or, um, Dave would like to say something, Paul has raised his hand. So go ahead, Paul, you'll want to unmute yourself.
Yeah, so, uh, considering the, uh, the, the additions that have been made in the police department. Um, do you know if the, because it said that there was a, a budding increase to the top of those, those two extra police, uh, uh, kick officers? Was that only in terms of just adding extra police departments or do you know if there are police officers, or do you know if there's any? Additions in terms of like, uh, investigative departments or, or things that have that, or simply is the, the quantity increase?
We. Would, if we're fully staffed, we would have two, two of our officers would be detectives. And because we're not fully staffed, we have a pin for a few years, um, we typically only have a lot, right? We need to have two, uh, two, you know. They can properly investigate crime, but we also need to be able to respond and, and on calls, uh, so. We've got, you know, the resources we have, we need to put it in control, and we're down right now. Uh, six officers, counting two that we added, so we're down to four. Uh, openings in our police department, and I just saw an email today that we, uh, where the female officer from another state in. Uh, is the lateral transfer, because we've got some incentives, uh, uh, hiring incentives, that means ten thousand dollars actually. For a lateral transfer, so the, you know, so Paul, if you wanted to become a police officer, you apply. And we decided tomorrow we wanted to, to hire you, it's, it's, so as a. New police officer who hasn't worked in law enforcement, it's eighteen months start to finish all of your training. You have to, to, you know, what I mean, having to find you a, a slot at the, the academy. And then when you come back from the academy, you do field training and riding with another officer before we're gonna turn it loose. Uh, in communities, so it's, it's the eighteen month process, so, and we only have. Capacity for a couple officers at a time in field training. And because we gotta make sure, you know, we want to have problems, like you see, you know, we want good officers that are properly trained to be. At, at, at least American, so, um, it's painful, but we don't have all the officers that be funded. But we gotta have the right people, that, that's, that's absolutely crucial. Well, I'm, I'm gonna answer to you, I'm ready.
And then, uh, if you wanna take your hand down, that would be great. Thank you, Paul. Um, Tyler or Dave, did you have any questions or comments for the mayor?
I was gonna ask about the hiring incentives, but you answered that.
No, I appreciate the presentation, like you brought, you know, yeah.
There's a lot going on for this, and you guys are important, so. So back, what about you?
Well, yeah, I, um, which my fellow commissioners are, I would assume unaware of. Um, I've been involved with transportation in the area for a while. And I want to compliment our council for passing the one tenth of a percent sales tax. Uh, to fund transportation, we've worked very hard at a regional level to find sustained, consistent funding. For local projects, um, and I think our city has the right idea of how to. Um, deploy this money when it comes in. The piece that I just want to remind everyone of is our major corridors and we'll take Bethel or we'll take Tremont or. Um, Sedgwick or the Pottery Sydney area. Most of the people that are on those are not the sixteen thousand residents of Port Orchard. Um, that they are people who are transiting through our city. And they are people who are shopping in our city and it's only right, in my opinion, that they have an opportunity. To, um, be involved in our transportation improvements. And by shopping in our city and paying this extra one tenth of a percent, the people that are actually using our streets. Will help fund projects, the other, um, issue I'm gonna say out loud because the mayor is here and the mayor has heard me. This mantra from me for a long time. And that is, I appreciate very much the work they're doing on Bethel, the work they're doing on all these other areas. But I do employ our council not to forget our legacy neighborhoods. Because we have neighborhoods and I will say the one I live in that is rarely talked about in, um. Road improvements, um, even paving or doing something with our street and, and I realize there are a lot of reasons for that. Um, but I do want to make sure that our legger, legacy neighborhoods are top of mind awareness, um. To our city folks, so those are my comments, again, I think, um, the police department does an excellent job. We have significant capital projects that I know the mayor and all the department heads have worked. Very diligently on and have done a really nice job of finding some funding for those. Uh, Paul, I see you have your hand raised again.
Yes, yeah, well, there, I, I have, you mentioned the, uh, the money granted to, uh, the state for the schools award for city land. And also, um, perceived as well, in turn, that's what's set like to more of a pedestrian pathway with the students there. Uh, are those two meant to be connected as, as in like the, the, um. The pedestrian and bicycle path will be connected between Sydney Land and Cedar Heights, or are they mostly meant to be two separate?
They're, they're two separate projects, but the intent is we're gonna connect that entire corridor, pedestrian, that's it.
And, and, uh, in terms of, uh, the money allocated for road improvements, will that also go to improving, um. The sidewalks and existing pedestrian pathways as well?
Those are maintenance dollars, so, yeah, and so that one point three or, those are maintenance dollars. So we have things like traffic impact fees or this will be one tenth. That we pass this capital and, and same way that, you know, you can get all these wonderful awards and grant and grants. That you, you can only use it to build this, so then it comes to your general fund to pay for the maintenance and so. Uh, fortunately, we've been saying, uh, good growth in our sales tax and the council has one we prioritize. Hiring additional police officers, but we're also putting a significant investments into our preservation maintenance of our roads.
Well, the reason I, I, I do mention that is, uh, you've mentioned earlier on, uh, when calling, uh, residents of border. Uh, there is towards being, uh, providing here, but also, uh, traffic and, uh, of course. Well, it's been shown several times that the only meaningful reduction to traffic would be more access to train, uh, public transportation. Possible paths, so it's a portfolio on that as well.
And that, are you happy to know, I didn't talk about it, but we finally closed on that piece of real estate in, in Sydney South. That plenty anchor for the. Door pond and, and our international park, that area, I mentioned, so, you know, Flower Meadows area was developed years ago under. Um, back when I was on the planning admission at one time, uh, under contiguous, contiguous short plats. So this developer came in and he would build a group of homes just under the threshold to do. Have their wiring to, uh, front and improve its stormwater improvements and that whole area, more than a hundred houses. Built that way, so there's no sidewalks, there's no streetlights, there's no stormwater infrastructure and we can't put. The sidewalks in because they'd be a tame on without storming structure, so the third gap was buying the. Without storming structure, so the first step was buying the leased land, build the regional storm pond. When we closed on it last year, but that's a, that's a priority too is to to address that. Uh, you know, historic neighborhood there, you know, it's been around for thirty years, forty years that uh was built a substandard pattern.
And Mayor, I, that's a wonderful segue to our next presentation on the um. Housing Action Plan. Um, but I would just invite any of our council members who have not spent time in what I call the quadrant from. Tremont, Sydney, South, um, to go up there and look. Um, that's where most of our infill development has been taking place and. I would say um it hasn't necessarily enhanced the neighborhood.
Well, and I'll get out of here. Thank you for serving in our community.
Thank you.
Of course, seeing your presentations and.
So I will. Um, the next presentation we have is on our housing action plan. And Nick or Jim, do you want to introduce our speakers?
I'll introduce them.
Thank you.
Jim, this is for the record, uh, the planning commission is where the city quarter. Um, it's one of our. Developing housing action plan. It's a consultant, we're sorry. Uh, their identity strategy exactly, all schools agree on housing matches. For these needs. Good remaining steps and the results of the existing additional survey. And some of the community outreach results, since the staff and makers have started to draft the housing action plan, which fills off the existing. Or and those outreach results. Staff provided a roadmap of the housing action plan. Scott, I'm Jim and Andrew Ball were here tonight, make your service easier. But I know they don't have a housing action, but we're thus thus far and working on, Scott.
Thanks, Jim. I'm Scott Makers, um, so by Andrew, who's actually at both legal and social group, uh, Portland's our economic and real estate still experts. Um, okay, we're gonna take a little presentation of this, um, we're gonna write a quick briefing on the draft housing action plan before you're denied. Um, uh, maybe some of your feedback, that's the the broad ideas, so we're most have a lot of minutia and some of the details, we welcome any. Um, feedback from here or early here writing. Um, Jim said he mentioned he presented the kind of interim reports in February. Uh, since then, we finalized the first few deliverables, which are those existing additional support and home engagement reports. Also, just a quick recap on the background, um, for your uh as a city, it's not directly control housing. Uh, but kind of manages to period your dollar regulation, some vision standards, uh, of a course, thanks, exactly that. And also you have goals and policies to get comprehensive land, that guy, house housing in land used to curse the city. Uh, some very plans, uh, for downtown, we create centers have uh has components describe. Uh, what's a vision for types of residential, commercial, just those areas. Uh, the city has a multifamily tax exemption program which provides some. Uh, tax rebates for properties that opt to local multifamily housing and or build affordable uh units. Um, and that was not used very much at first, was adopted also in twenty sixteen, I believe, but more recently it's been picked up, uh, so we've got a close look at that. And also, um, the city's already been doing several cases of zoning codes, maps, developer English, so in the past few years, so. Um, housing action plans provide an opportunity to assess the results of that and some uh suggestions for these forward. Um, towns and housing property, uh, there's the twenty three hundred new parks, the pipeline, and they're mostly the typical uh as suburban style garden. Uh, low rise parks or three stores or so, um, and those those are helpful for meeting housing demands. Uh, but they're not always even the cities interested in having more denser or uh or taller buildings that can help. Provide more uh activity and support business to the town. Um, and also the city's not seeing a lot of the missing buildings, that's housing will share kind of between scale, those are part of the same family homes. Uh, things like duplexes, town, cottage clusters, uh, that provide a little bit more variety and interest, uh, choice for folks. Uh, so to address these worthless work, uh, or through his work under a grant of the municipal state farmer commerce. Um, created housing action plan, uh, which the policy document now, um, provides some specific data, goals and recommendations to address uh first time elements. Uh, thanks. And just kind of further emphasize why housing matters, um, to force in in a lot of cities that. Um, the availability of price of housing affects their most quality of life. Uh, if you don't have enough housing, you have low vacancy rates, which increases the price of the housing. Here, people can trade up or trade down housing as they, um, go through lives, just having children or retiring or downsize. Um, available housing and affordable house is essential to the cities that have developments and being able to retain. Uh, set of workers, uh, in the local workforce. Um, housing directly affects traffic and emissions, uh, the less houses available in town where people wanna work or shop nearby. Or to be able to try or live further away. Uh, providing housing in the city, um, protects rural areas, uh, by putting less pressure on farms and forests development. That's kind of one of the larger uh goals of the municipal state government act, which is part of our planning here, whatever using. And also homelessness, uh, higher housing costs have a direct correlation with kind of homeless secondary experience, so. Um, being able to provide a supply of housing that's both affordable and also uh supportive and socially relevant, you know, service distance as well, thanks that. I'll turn over to Andrew quickly, uh, to kind of go over some of the key points, this is the existing condition before. Uh, yeah, Jim, touch on this, uh, to a global compromise for the background information.
Thanks, Scott. Hello, everyone. Thank you guys here. Um, good, excited. Uh, so I've maybe seen it in multiple forms, though, Scott mentioned through the, stuck on some key points. Um, this is the part of going on the permanent data over the past, uh. It's even that started nineteen eighty, nineteen ninety, anyway, a long time. Uh, and it shows, as you can see in yellow, so many numbers are in orange for purpose. And in between are a little bit of a lot here and there, but overall, um, a great increase in the past uh few years, particularly uh since. Twenty eighteen and some of this courses due to annexation, the new available, uh, it's really happened toward her, but there's been. Huge amount of housing and the increase, housing production, uh, mostly as we said for. And larger. Um, this is the same data going in the future for a few years as far as we have permanent data from. That he would be providing and very organized, right? Um, so we can see here, there's about five thousand one ninety eight units. Uh, this is about as many as there are now in Port Orchard, so within the next five, six, seven years, um, there's gonna be a doubling of housing supply in city, which is pretty remarkable. Uh, there is still mostly a significant amount of product, but there's some um duplexes and other things coming in there, uh, in the product user as well and um. Uh, so that that is kind of most coming down the down the hill. Uh, housing costs are going up, as everybody is aware, of course, um, all over the region and country, but especially. You sound area in general, um, you can see here the median household income is the yellow line in the middle and the rents are shown in. Blue and home values are showing green, so there's a real strong uptick in uh housing. Uh, affordability issues, especially the past five or so years, um, you can see that incomes have been essentially relatively consistent. Whereas the prices of both ownership and rental housing have gone way up and. This uh finally shows. Uh, some of the um. Uh, housing demand forecast, uh, that we include in housing plan, there's a lot of work being done in commerce. Around future housing needs by income level, which are met over as well. And so these numbers are continuing to fluctuate and since the housing needs assessment. Uh, was finalized, it actually never found out, but it's for the later target, which seems to be more likely to be up relatively soon. Uh, it's worth that major new uh units by twenty forty four. And you can see that these, uh, you know, rate across the income spectrum, uh, the bottom is percentage of their immediate income. But the three bars, which pick up the most are worth the high man for about uh thousand units. Um, for residents earning, you know, a hundred thirty percent of their immediate income, so those would be very subsized for housing essentially. Um, then there's the spike in the middle, uh, kind of workforce housing, this speaks to something, so I'm mentioning earlier. People, uh, you know, potentially will look a quarter. To live in town, work here and this happens, you know, uh, as the housing prices go up. So we see some demand there as well, the future of a thousand units or so needed in that, and then that can be wide variety of types. Meaning from some types of housing to private providers or also um smaller units and naturally different portal housing that. Sort of builds us down as um, as new housing, so and then of course, uh, the high demand, uh, based on current income. Distribution, protecting, featuring distribution for order is for a bunch of, you know, hiring. Units for household earning over a hundred percent of the income and that's honestly seeing a lot of that type of single. Current. Uh, so that's um thirty seconds on housing needs, the housing assessment is um. I'm trying to pop that it is a lot more in there, if you wanted to get into it, and I'll turn it over to Scott, I'll probably see. Before I answer it.
Uh, just to quickly recap, I'm gonna, this is, I guess, I'm, or I have information, but just to. Mind everyone, we did fourteen stakeholder interviews, uh, which included all the cities elected officials and several of the. Uh, housing providers working in town, uh, both on the private, uh, market side and the nonprofit side. And some takeaways on the next slide are. Generally, uh, folks are agreeing that's a reason for for providing growth is the. Both the stability of the local military presence, also, uh, just folks moving to Gethin County or the general. Uh, it's a little bit more favorable compared to like heat town, for example. Um, it's all the communities also able to people to live further away from work, uh, if they work in office jobs. Uh, diversity housing is a challenge, uh, but it could be popular, uh, based on the markets, uh, dynamics that Andrew's part of that, the different rates of income of folks living in town. Um, there's a strongly between housing growth and infrastructure needs, uh, as the mayor was talking about, so there's a great need for, uh, housing development to be supported by roads. School and parks and schools and things like that. Um, and announcements, uh, and and more interested in seeing more housing downtown as well, given the strong transit connections and some of the civic, many stuff like or. In the center. Uh, next. Uh, we can, we conducted a housing survey, uh, for a few months, uh, ran in November through February, uh, with a hundred twenty responses for folks who are living or working in town. Uh, I'm asking about some of these issues, trying to verify a little bit of data, get uh some more detailed information based on stable at first. So we have folks about some kind of housing and living, how much paying for housing. Um, do they feel stable and there hasn't switched and things like that? Uh, we also asked them about specific conquests, well, addressing these challenges, so. Um, things like the people be able to zoning changes, uh, would folks be able to, uh, seeing taller buildings or would they like to have. Different types of transportation structure for this or connecting new neighborhoods. Um, generally found that, uh, people are open to those ideas, uh, renters a little bit more supportive. Uh, some of the uh older approaches and homeowners, um, there. Uh, we also found that the most important feature, uh, where do you housing is actually built in a city and located is there is a safe for walking vice. Uh, that remains other things like, uh, being near parks, uh, grocery stores. I've got to ask about some other slightly tangential items, uh, so related to supporting, uh, qualified towns, just daycare and access to medical services. Um, and found that folks agree that some of those, uh, the challenges exist in cities as well. My next, uh, we have a a a few dozen folks submitted out what we call housing stories in the survey that I urge everyone to to take the time to read to later. Um, I'm talking about everything from why they moved to town, uh, how they found their housing here, where they want to move in the future. Um, and in order, and how housing officer affect them, uh, their family, their bills, keep them stay and working town. Okay, thanks. Um, so next, um, we're gonna go over the actual drafts here, uh, at a ten thousand foot level, um. The, we took in all that, uh, background information and published that to our. Suggested implementation priorities, um, for the housing action plan. Um, and as you, as you probably heard, and as you know, uh, there's lots of people that are focused on solving, uh, or housing challenges. Um, but our working experience is, uh, kind of coalescing around, uh, some key suggestions and, uh, multiple types of tools to kind of turn that. Uh, into different ways, um, and perhaps. In combination of these, uh, ideas will not necessarily directly reduce housing costs, but maybe they'll help reduce the. Uh, cost increases and providing options to people, uh, at their levels of income, um. So, uh, we got it divided into, one. I mean, divided, this is a few sections, the report, uh, the first one is on regulatory strategies. I'll scope a couple of them in detail in here, uh, but they kind of, uh, summarized, we suggest allowing adjustments, perhaps some of the allowed land use. Subzones across the city, um, be a little bit more flexible on what types of residential leases are allowed. Um, and having a little, um, more parity between rental housing and where homeless housing can be built. Uh, since the city's planning scope and devices. This is today, the city has a set of building type standards that. Uh, adjusts, uh, has different block dimensions and architectural standards based on building, apartment building or town assets or duplex, for example, so. Um, we suggest clarifying or consolidating some of those, think a little bit, uh, for the few ones. Um, definitely some block by standards, uh, consider adding new density standards, uh, particularly for large competitions. Uh, certainly height limits, adding portable housing bonuses for building heights and some other solenies justice to design standards. Um, that are important, so the next slide. We're all mentioned, uh, so it's a zoning mapping, back to the rocks needed. Uh, we have to get any major map changes likely as part of the housing action plan, but, uh, it is also coincidentally working on. By a comprehensive plan, I think, uh, was just connected here, uh, and as part of that project, we will probably be. Recommending some updates to the land spend, so you have as part of that process. Um, so the lock size standards, this is really probably the, one of the biggest, um, changes that we're, we're still working with staff, we're trying, but. Um, seems to be one of the bigger opportunities, uh, for for hers, housing diversity. And that is to relax minimum lock size standards and, uh, minimum lock size with, uh, for those middle housing types, so. Um, but keep them in place for single family homes, and this is really important because, uh, in a lot of cases, you probably won't see. Um, duplexes and attachments and whatnot, a brand new greenfield lots that you count, you might see them probably more often. Uh, redeveloping older homes to the central, uh, such part of town or legacy neighborhoods. And, uh, provide some more flexible block size standards for those who allow that, those that we use to have a little bit more easily. So in exchange, we suggest, uh, in, so you could potentially have some slightly higher number of units on smaller personal land. Uh, but still provide setbacks and yard space and things like that, and just balancing, uh, these lock size changes, but. I require a bit of private useful open space. Um, so you still get the benefits of having, uh, some space for people to, you know, make sure the lots are livable and functional for families' residents. Uh, but again, maintain, maintain loss, I say, the detached houses, uh, for. Most single family homes that were, it's keys. Um, we said back there, colleges, attached houses, duplexes, townhouses, triplexes and fourplexes, uh, we kind of above that bill has what we're talking about. Uh, so adjustments for apartment buildings, the R three zone, uh, which is also, again, a deal with our town. Um, suggested the apartment buildings to be pretty small, um, and falling, yeah, they can be on lots of, oh, thousand square feet. And even smaller lots, you know, five thousand square for alley access is available, the rest, now there is that we have alley access. Um, you can have a little bit more efficient apartment layouts, uh, which, uh, allows you to use land a little bit more effectively. And then finally, in the R four vertical zones, uh, we suggest removing all non lock sizes, that's, uh, with with mixed use and peripheral elements. Um, long size are not really relevant, uh, maybe it's more bigger buildings, larger projects, uh, things like. Setbacks and the amount of apartment we need are really what drive a metal bank, you need, so. Moving them on a loss by standard, just, uh, kind of remove a layer of of complexity in terms of site planning. Uh, building heights is the other key regulatory, uh, strategy we're looking at, uh, suggesting changes on. Um, these are all preliminary numbers, uh, still being worked through, uh, but the general idea is, um, to allow more economical developments since. Um, some of these, uh, height limits near current one mixed use zones, um, are fairly low for the type of uses that are allowed there. Um, you know, for example, in the, uh, the every mixed use zone, which has a title of thirty five feet today, that allows basically a three story building. Um, which is, uh, you you do see new three story buildings. Um, which is, uh, you, you, you do see new three-story buildings once in a while, but it's the way land values and markets going in order through. Uh, you really can see more for area allow, uh, for developers to get a return on their investments in the bigger projects viable. And such a lot of truck is like wood creative trucking, uh, which is a lot of six stories. Um, anything we build between three and six stories generally has the same cost per square foot. Uh, so the more stories we allow, the more efficient, uh, you can allow those structure costs to be. So we suggest, uh, like allowing, uh, about roughly one hectare four in some of these commercial zones, uh, which will allow uh, particularly if you want to use development, allow some of the residential floor area on the upper floors to help pay for uh, the commercial space in the ground for that encourages, um, for some more business opportunities. Um, in addition, we was suggesting at, uh, potentially an addition that recently, uh, the, the base heights by at least one quarter in some of these zones is also allowing to add quarters above that, um, in exchange for providing portable housing. Uh, or subsidized housing, which is priced at a rate that's affordable to lower rating folks, um, and uh, using the great work of the states to sustain, uh, multi-country tax incentive program, uh, which is already in place and well-known, uh, to help unlock that bonus. Uh, in the most cases, uh, are generally trashers, so it's going to, but it's fifty-five feet if you have, uh, participation in that program. Uh, we're sort of violating the twelve year and also a new, then we were pointing your program, which, uh, stays when they allow. Um, it has to be kind of so, if you were a little bit, uh, or less, those two, right, or poorly, yes, so, uh, provides some offers there. And you will notice, uh, downtown zones and the downtown overlay districts are actually, let's start right now, uh. We know that view protection is already in the downtown area, uh, yet it's also the heart of the uh, transit connections, uh, and city amenities, so, um, is there any changes that are going to be made there, there's kind of trade-offs between housing capacity versus observing views of the natural, uh, splatter here? So, um, we're still kind of working for some of those, I guess, welcome feedback as well. Um, so a couple more supplies for me, uh, urban management strategies, kind of address things that the city does at the county level. Um, and other updates to this codes, so anti-displacement strategies, um, refer to, uh, methods to um, kind of prevent, uh, people from being priced out of town, just from, uh, rent increases or not being able to pay property taxes or mortgage. And kind of address, uh, people's ability to stay in their homes upfront. So in the short term, on the next slide, um, there's a variety of strategies and kind of a menu of options that workers potentially adopt. Um, uh, back a little bit, uh, Washington state law provides a lot of, of basic, uh, protections for renters. Um, and the governance, the landlords and their relationships. And cities have the options to really go a little bit further and adopt other, uh, ten protections, um, and there's a, uh, number of cities in Washington have done that, so there's this kind of a, no, 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 uh, particular models to follow, but these are just kind of a list of bullet points of options that could help tenants, uh, anticipate rent increases, um, or hope to protect them in case the properties are poor condition, so. Uh, other options include, uh, increased notice time for rental increases to allow people to prepare for that. Um, not a lot of rent increases to the properties to be in poor condition, if the, if it doesn't incur building codes. Uh, requiring relocation assistance, this is a little bit on the farther end of the scale, um. Capping movement fees such as security deposits and personal last month's rents, or allowing folks to pay those installments instead of one large pump upfront. Um, requiring a cost of events, uh, to be, uh, documented, banned discriminatory incentive rental practices. And, uh, rightfully registration, which allows the city to kind of track, which directly gets, those are all a variety of options that the city have, kind of has the short term, so it would help reduce, uh, I can't help the placement for, for rental increases. Uh, in the long term, on the next slide, uh, there's kind of some other ideas, uh, that have been tested by various cities across the country that have have been varying degrees, some, uh, really depend on the amount of available funding in the local part of it. Um, non-profit groups that provide community services and, uh, legal services to, to renters, um, but some of the city can be also proactive about. Uh, for example, um, budgeting to actually acquire, uh, existing multifamily housing and have the city either run that or provide to an service provider, such as South of Kintan. Uh, providing, uh, rental assistance to folks who may be on the edge of, uh, eviction or or homelessness and need just a couple months to help, uh, make sure they can stay in their home. Uh, housing availability system is often, uh, this can be grant programs for homeowners to help, uh, keep their home in shape. Uh, or for, uh, major maintenance issues to help them, uh, be able to stay in their home. Uh, community land trusts and partnerships, uh, relate to helping, uh, community groups and uh, neighborhood groups, uh, bands together, purchase land and help maintain community control land that helps uh, by, uh, reduces the market factor on, uh, O five securities. Uh, I think most cities in Washington have also, uh, increased their, uh, wage, uh, above the state level, which, uh, kind of addresses the problem on the opposite side. And giving folks, uh, retail service sectors for, um, paper housing. And also kind of tangential to that is, uh, stuff that is for child and parent education, which, um, covers that significant, um, for instance, most of that budget. And he wants to housing costs. Uh, and then we're close to wrapping up here, I will, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, false slides, uh, the housing coordinator idea, uh, also the legislative side is, um, to fund and hire specific gaps, if you have the department of creative developments. Uh, the help, uh, input, the housing action plan itself. Um, work with housing stakeholders and just kind of generate the role, grow more, uh, market rate and portable housing throughout the city. Uh, it's a, so that a couple of other cities in Washington have tried out and, uh, we think, uh, if you work here in order to expect it, just give me volume permits to be seen, um, and the, uh, amount of tax support that are, that's the need to help, uh, kind of judge with all that against, uh, our planning departments. So this could be a minimum two-year dividend or a ten-year permanent. Uh, key responsibilities include, uh, promoting cities, uh, housing incentives and uh, zoning options to developers, so be aware, uh, options in the city to develop, find available land. Uh, be your coordinator between, uh, the city and nonprofit and, uh, other service providers, especially for, for, uh, uh, the homeless, uh, or for movement, the elderly, uh, and the resort for my own tenant abuse, you know, kind of generally monitor portable housing protectives, see this, see this, these goals. Uh, next, citywide planning strategies. Uh, relate to more policy level approaches, um. I'll get into comprehensive plan updates on the next slide, I'll just quickly touch on the land acquisition. I kind of relates to the, I need earlier permission of actually acquiring, uh, housing properties or multifamily properties by the city. Uh, the city also has a large land inventory and, uh, we suggest that the policy for analyzing when certain land becomes available in, in the city's inventory, uh, kind of assess what might be possible for, uh, selling off to, uh, portable housing developers in the future. And kind of using that asset of the city, uh, help increase housing as well. Uh, comprehensive plan updates, uh, so we have this plan is kind of frequently, you know, all the hospitals in the city. Um, and as you're updating it, uh, over the next year, so, uh, through twenty twenty-four, or she, uh, is due at the end of twenty twenty-four. Uh, so here's the title of the, of these ideas. Uh, in the housing, all this, uh, we suggest, uh, common sense of the, uh, adding quality goals that help bring to the housing action plan. Um, and supports specific strategies implements. And also updating, uh, the housing needs and forecasts, uh, by income levels, the new requirement of states. Uh, extend your great work, you know, you have kind of the, the, the foundation of that place. Then other land settlements, uh, we suggest, uh, when work to, uh, review the balance between, uh, the need for residential current line capacity. Such in your, your key corridors, uh, that will send vote trim on, um, in, uh, in your transit quarters to make sure that the land used um, the development that's allowed there is, kind of, it's transportation policies. Uh, potentially allowing more small commercial use in residential neighborhoods, uh, to, uh, excuse development, maybe people to not necessarily drive for all their, all the daily needs being able to watch the corner score, uh, for a long term, for example. And a bigger piece is also particularly considered removing or major efforts to parkway requirements since, uh, overly restricted parking requirements can, um, be a detriment to, uh, the finances of housing development. Um, and generally in the markets and private developers, um, have a pretty good take on what they, the parking partners are. Uh, so this is just kind of allow them to have a little bit more control of the process versus kind of the top-down, um, governments and most parking parks that we have today. Um, that's, um, that would definitely require a little bit more for everybody, so that's, you know, we don't suggest that it can be a major part of today, but uh, making it kind of part of this comprehensive plan process, which is all about. All right, so I'll turn it over to Andrew for money strategies. Okay. Excellent. Um, money is the last thing I've got, so I don't know if it's good or bad, but anyway, um, here we go. These are, um, the seconds, um, that we find record full on various funding strategies that were suggesting the part have, uh, how fund this housing. Uh, needs and border, uh, N F T E with, uh, very, uh, on, uh, development fee adjustments. Uh, you're, uh, as the mayor mentioned, uh, if I feel a little bit high here, um, he didn't find, uh, a huge amount of sort of frustration with that, we spoke to the developer, uh, interviewed for this plan, but they did acknowledge that they're high, that could be probably a huge barrier. Uh, but there are some, uh, some small benefits that we can get, especially around, uh, you use for housing. Uh, local bank funding, it's sort of more typical idea that is through in, uh, maybe a part of local banks to help on, uh, uh, to help on portable housing through their community investment act apartments. Um, so you also have a bank here that's, um, involved in muted, muted, uh, one, I guess, so that's, okay. Boom. Uh, taxing for financing is a tool that's available in a lot of states and is recently proven available in Washington. Uh, in a limited capacity, but could be helpful in, uh, some areas, especially downtown, that whole corridor. And, uh, we have key suggestions for funding for a new development as well, and, uh, state advocacy, I just sort of section on what's going on, largely, which will try to keep up with the news. As that finishes up here. Okay, so multiple tax reduction, um, it's a really effective tool, uh, as Scott mentioned, it's been in place for, it's going to be. Um, it's produced, uh, both our four project and we're ordering three hundred thirty-two units, having, uh, with twenty year, uh, for the units. Uh, but now there's a lot of, an increase in the program among developers. Um, and there's four hundred and thirty-seven units going in the pipeline, uh, using this tool, uh, of forty-five or forty-eight. So, um, it's working, uh, we took a, a, a look at some of the, uh, the mechanics of the program and had a few recommendations for ways that could potentially improve um, to better, uh, you know, incentivize a multi-family development. Um, especially, uh, portable housing, um. The first one is kind of housekeeping, um, adding, you know, density standards that are required by state law. You only give this tax exemption to development which occurred in the areas that have a certain density. And, uh, currently, uh, the density is, uh, sort of calculated based on setbacks and, and, uh, allow, you know, building heights and things in your zone, so that works, but you could also just, uh, add the density use for acre, which would, if program, uh, the, the policy, sorry, that the, uh, empty regulation more in sync with the state requirements. Um, it's very, I want to study, sort of, on this, um, incentivizing program use, uh, through allowing developers to build, uh, a couple of stories and, um, maybe the liability started, but the one that have four units, um, or feasible. Um, the type three program, it's a program that, uh, is designed to sort of create urban style, um, you know, multi-story, basically, ground for commercial state. If they use one, quite, quite, um, so far, and feedback we heard about that program was that there are some requirements, especially around parking density are, uh, a, a little bit difficult to navigate and kind of identify some ways, um, which are more moving to great lengths, but, um, to, to potentially make that a little bit easier for developers who should use the program, uh, particularly around, um, you know, um, not necessarily, uh, defining exactly how much parking and density are both required, but if you require a certain level of density, you only will achieve that is is through producing parking to a certain, uh, amount of parking or putting it at, you know, a certain car. So, uh, there's some requirements to come in that program, uh, responses feedback here. Um, reducing the minimum number of units, this is, um, in response to some recent changes in twenty twenty-one, the program at state level is now allowed to go down to four units. Uh, it was the previous threshold of ten, uh, we're using it for four, would be beneficial in that you may sort of be able to see things like, um, some townhomes developed in this program, uh, especially in, in the final goal point there, uh, which is, uh, an element of the program. So another change of, maybe twenty twenty-one is that cities are now allowed to, uh, offer twenty-year tax incentive, um, twenty-five percent units sold, uh, in, at, 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 at two certain portable prices through an unorganized developer. So, I have the combination could, you know, open up opportunities for, kind of, see some, some, like, attached account on both things, cool. Uh, so it's all very easy, and, and it's the last, it's good point, so, uh, I'll give the, uh, timing here, but anyway, um, this is, uh, just, uh, some information impacting refinancing, which you probably have heard of in other states. Um, it's a very common tool for economic development where, uh, the um, increased, uh, tax revenue that results from, uh, increased property values captured and used to fund improvements um, to an area that will, uh, increase, that, that will, that will cause an increase in property values. Uh, that's represented by that light blue thing. Section of the chart there, so as apartment values go up, in advance of apartment values going up, uh, improvements are created in the area. Then the city can, like, issue a bond to fund those improvements and then repay that bond through, uh, the revenues, uh, from the increased tax or, uh, from the increased property tax. Uh, for a certain number of years, and this did not previously been available in Washington, it's now available, uh, in a limited way, and that long list in the third bullet point there, uh, is the things that you can use it for, uh, important things, um, on the list relative to housing, okay, portable housing finance is one of them, but also, uh, streets and sidewalk and a lot of things we've been talking about earlier. So, uh, our recommendation is to popularly pour this away, especially in, uh, from the corridor plan. In the Bethel area, which has identified specific, uh, street redesign, uh, in your Bethel corridor plan or, uh, for specific sites that, uh, like, kind of, you're on the waterfront, you know, that have a specific project, you have to have the project sort of established upfront before you set up the tip, did, and then, uh, you can't bring anything else into that product, so it's limited, but for the city areas where you're doing large projects down here or over in Bethel, uh, it could be, uh, a way to sort of close to those, I mean, yes, or get additional, unexpected of a street game, but that can prove it there. Uh, and finally, um, there's, uh, some programs that we studied and I wrote up, uh, some work that I've in the in the, um, plan that, uh, that are ways of funding the EU development, um, you know, sort of strategic swallow infill by a smaller units that can be rented out at a lower price point, providing more, personally, if you're talking about, while also sort of keeping that for the neighbors relatively intact. And, um, there's, there's different models for this from around the country in our west. Um, some of these are programs that, where the city can help on, um, loan, homeowners who are able to be able to afford to build any view. Uh, some of our programs where homeowners building you and can, this is funding for, it's concerning that they're renting to, like, a better holder or a lower tenant, so, uh, there's my data there, um. Uh, definitely the, this you like to pursue, uh, in terms of sort of creating, uh, well-paying opportunities for owners through, uh, income break use, uh, and providing sort of lower building housing to, uh, through that, for. Okay, and now it's Scott, let's go.
Uh, that's it's, we, uh, are expecting, uh, the, about the housing action plan by city council, or we should, very may, or early June. I don't know about our, but. Okay, so. That's, uh, obviously, that was a lot of information, I knew that there's a lot of time, uh, but we're having the take back of the, if you guys have this far.
Again, um, my first question is, has this, um, this draft plan been reviewed by the land use committee yet at the city council?
Uh, we, uh, provided it to the land use last week, so, uh, was, could have been your package, it was briefly discussed last week.
Okay. Um, are there any questions? If so, please use the raise your hand feature. There any comments or questions? There was a lot of information this evening. Nick?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak on this issue real quickly. Um, I think we've been scrambling a little bit to get this draft together and Yeah, I just wanted to speak on this issue real quickly. I think we've been scrambling a little bit to get this draft together and so. Between various absences and trying to coordinate feedback, we are still actively reviewing the document. And so. I, I think there's still a few sections that are being worked on that will need staff review. And so we're trying to get you as much information as possible now. To study this in anticipation of what is likely a hearing in. At our May meeting and even after the hearing, if you want to chew on this, we can take a look. You don't have a whole lot of time before our grant funding runs out, but you do have time to work on this. And potentially, if we need to do additional edits, we can, we can take those steps. So. I just wanted you to know that this is still, this is a draft document at this point, and we are still putting considerable effort into it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Tyler?
Actually, yes, Tyler, it was Anna for me.
Okay.
And actually, Nick, I was going to ask you some questions. We spent a lot of effort and time a few years ago updating a lot of our zoning. What does your feel about how this dovetail into what we did all that effort we put in a few years ago?
Well, I'm going to first say that the state legislature is considering a major housing bill. That is sort of, I think the end of the session is the first week of May. If that bill passes and if it impacts Port Orchard. I, I think that we're going to be revamping our zoning code anyway, because we have to comply with state law. So. I'm waiting to see what happens with the legislature. I, I do agree that there are some ways to simplify the zoning code that I think would be helpful. And again. We, we adopted this zoning code based on a model that, that was borrowed from another jurisdiction. Having used it for about four years, I think there is some streamlining that can be done. And I also think that as part of our comprehensive planning process. I, I think that rather than having. I'll, I'll give you an example right now, but, but for single family homes, we have different lot sizes for different zones. I think our code would be a lot simpler if you just had one set of standards for detached houses. And each zone, the difference between the zones would be what housing types are allowed in that zone. And so R one would be, you know, single family homes duplexes. Possibly fourplexes if the legislature takes action. Backyard cottages. R two would add some additional housing types to the mix, townhomes and. Possibly others. And then R three would, would add apartments to the mix. And, and rather than having. Different standards for those building types depending on what your zone you're in, let's find the right standard for each of those building types. And then the zones only vary by what building type is allowed. So I'm. I'm thinking maybe two steps ahead about our comp plan update. And so I think the recommendations in the housing action plan are good. But I think there's also kind of a more systematic overhaul that we can take up as part of the comp plan amendment that would have the same effect, but also simplify our code.
Okay, good, because. I hate to every four years have to go through what we did for. And it's almost like a rewrite that. There's another, another point. There's a couple of times you mentioned about adding. Third, fourth, fifth floors. And Nick, correct me or clarify, I remember we discussed, we discussed this from years ago and said that there was something with regards to. The economics of building and construction grade of a third, fourth, fifth floor. Structure that made them financially less desirable and inferiority is saying it's a board salary.
Yeah, I think that once you go to a four story building, you're almost always going to include an elevator and. That type of construction, I think, adds quite a bit of cost in most developers, I think. When they look at the price per square foot of, of. The construction requirements for a building of that height, they prefer a three story building or they need to go all the way to six to make that pencil. Scott or Andrew could. Probably provide more information on that, but that's generally the type of feedback that we've heard is it's, it's hard to build a four story building because. You need those additional stories to sort of carry the construction cost of putting in elevators and other systems to, to serve a building of that height.
And that's what I recall, which makes me wonder why would a three, four, four building be more. Cost effective from this part of the desk. One was a question that popped up. One last kind of question is, what if this proposed increase in housing? If you look at the facilities infrastructure, we have a chemical path handling. Stewards, water, and on our heights, we have water volume issue not too dear very long ago, cable, et cetera. I think our, our, we sometimes struggles with that. How would they keep up with this particular problem?
Yeah, that's a good question. We, I, this could really help with the talks down about some of that and a couple of cases when we propose like a bigger change for them. So this area of this has a great story. It's been about that things here and there. That'll, that'll happen even more easily with the progress plan, which is has a larger consulting team, including engineers and so moderate. Utility experts that are going to tie that together even more close to make sure. The city's planning for utilities, mansion, that increase in housing.
Yes, but then we also need to maintain all that super true practice as well. So. Is one, do you have it? Two, can we increase capacity? Two, have it? And three, how do we maintain it?
Right, yeah. I think in theory, the, the more housing you have, the more property tax says actually generate, which I'll state on going to make this kind of. Kind of the concept that's on this project on. I also say like, that's something that I think about some of the long stay line, but metal has been said they are in the plan, though, you know, like. Maybe it's going on by around the state. Is the very gradual pace that that's sort of occurred in, in the few places where that's happened so far, like working. So I think from the perspective of like corridor planning and larger multi-family development downtown or. Or in the corridor areas, that's also part of the compliance stuff saying. Those questions will be sort of baked into the some area plans for those areas. You know, there will be forecast of population and, and utility people we look at. Exactly what, what that sort of population, if it were to be centered in those areas would be as far as comparing neighborhood, that they see plus or use and stuff like that. The piece of that. Even. You know, you know, area where a lot of housing demand like it's still gonna be. Would be quite expected to be quite slow. So I think, I think there's sort of considerations around denser, you know, development and all that they have in centered. For the, for your ability and requirements for.
Was there anything else, Steve? If not, I'll call on Paul.
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to work on sort of what you were saying there with the, with the utility infrastructure that is worth this kind of housing. It's understanding that generally with that's your housing, you find that the utility infrastructure costs are actually lower than they are with less dense, simple power construction. And also along this border, we've seen sort of especially along the Sydney central area, central landing area. With the plans to put in that sewerway, they shouldn't front that. That, you know, that's sort of factor in like what I've seen, but generally I think that it's, it's going on a good. You know, good path was seeing is how if we were to replace. Or we fill in that, that extra demand that we're inevitably going to have in the next, you know, twenty years or so. With, you know, the single family attached houses that we've become used to, that's a, all is our infrastructure cost. Would be balloon bar quality above what we'll be able to handle. So I think that's, that's going on a pretty good pathway.
Nick?
Yeah, related to infrastructure, I just want to point out, I, I think what Paul said is mostly correct, though we are going to run into a water rights issue. And the state is currently closed to water rights. And so we can't pump more water. It's going to come. We're going to have to do conservation or purchase water from West Sound Utility District or Bremerton. Or potentially, we're going to have to look at a merger with West Sound Utility District at, at some point in our future. And so I think that. There will be individual bottlenecks in the city that become problems, like we'll have sewer lift stations that reach capacity and we'll have an entire basin where no further development can happen until. A public project takes place. The capital facility charges for development do pay for those sorts of improvements. But, but I, you know, right now, the, the Ruby Creek neighborhood, we just received a new lift station for the North Basin of Ruby Creek. The South Basin is. Totally. Closed for development until an additional lift station is built. There are, are similar issues elsewhere in the city and there, so. There are capacity constraints in terms of our overall ability to deal with, with, to provide. Water in terms of volume and then also our sewer treatment plant has a limited capacity. And at some point. That is going to run out and that serves both West Sound and the city of Port Orchard. I haven't heard recently, I think we, we designed that to handle a population of the combined West Sound area and city of like fifty five thousand people. But we're going to be pushing up against that if we continue to upzone and we really haven't talked about what happens next with sewage if we run out of capacity at that point.
Thank you. I. Your first comments pleased me a great deal. When you indicated that there was still quite a bit of staff work that was going into this draft plan before we see it in May. When I read it, there were quite a few items that came to my attention that were not necessarily in. That I was completely comfortable with. So I will look forward to changes that you have. And perhaps seeing that draft plan again before we have a public hearing on it in May. There has been a lot of work and, and I appreciate that. So Nick, go ahead.
Well, and, and on that note, as you're reviewing this and studying it between now and our next meeting. Feel free to send in comments if you have them or if you, if you see things that you feel need to be corrected. Don't hesitate to bring those to our attention so that we can get that corrected before the next draft comes out. And I'm, I'm happy to, to take, take those comments.
Okay, thank you. I do have some pictures of a development I was in recently that I. Again, it was in a different jurisdiction and I would hope that. When we come up with our housing action plan and our comprehensive plan, that it's a development that we wouldn't encourage in our city. So I will. Do that offline with you. Is there anything else on this? We do appreciate all of the hard work that our consultants have on this. It's a, a bit overwhelming to start with. But we will review it. We will get through it and we thank you very much for your hard, your hard work and the effort that you've put into this. So I'm assuming because I'm away and, and the camera doesn't show a lot, I'm assuming it was Scott that led part of that discussion.
Yes.
Hey, Scott.
More specific feedback we can get from us, I think, also are.
Thank you. So with that, we will go ahead and move down our agenda and I believe the next item on the agenda. Jim, I think you were going to take that. Is that correct? Or Josie? I'm looking for my agenda real quickly. I believe it was rules and regulations for the planning commission.
Correct. Hi, everyone. My name is Josie Roboff. This is the mayor of City. At the last meeting, city staff was very aware of the lack of regulations applied to the planning officials' activities and that some regulations would be among the commission. Over to municipal code two point twenty, the section of code outlining regulations for the planning efficient currently. Provide some direction for the commission, but perhaps serves some attention and potential updates. In tonight's packet, staff provided the current language for Q O C two dot twenty and examples of planning official regulations prepared by communities in. Polsbo, K Harbor, Bay Ridge Island, and Bremerton. These examples provide a variety of regulations, very complex to relatively simple. For example, Bremerton's planning mission by laws to provide guidance on Bremerton. Bremerton's playing vision by laws to provide guidance on what. Bremerton expects of further permission. This approach is more complex than the others provided, but maybe what the planning commission might aspire to provide to you. Here introducing this to use a industry discussion on the planning commission to develop regulations for former planning commission based on these regulations and bylaws. While we do not believe that the planning commission needs to adopt strict regulations, some guidance is necessary in that relatively simple combination of regulations and bylaws. Over the next few months. The planning commission should consider the direction of the plan that the planning commission should take and provide back to staff. In the next months, after developing any regulations, staff will bring my own part.
Thank you. I'm going to offer. Just some initial comments and then open it up to the rest of the commission. I would encourage our staff to continue moving forward with this. When I read chapter two point two zero regarding our planning commission, the first thing I noticed is there's nothing in our code regarding. Remote attendance. And I thought that was something that probably should be addressed. I know the city council, the code. The Port Orchard mystical code section that governs the city council definitely defines remote attendance. And. I thought that that would be appropriate for us to have it defined. Our code also does not mention anything about our rules of engagement. And I would like to see us adopt Robert's rules of order or because I'm familiar with that or one such. Rules, standards that we would function by. Those were the things that really came to my attention. When I read some of the things in the other. From the other cities and particularly Bremerton's bylaws, it brought other issues. Up to me, but those were the two that I thought were, were most important for us. But I would offer it to the other commissioners to see what comments they have, whether we should pursue this or not. Tyler?
Yes, I'm open to pursuing some more. Detailed language in there, especially. How we expect the case. In that way, it's permanent, but also those.
We have one commissioner that would like to see us continue with this. Dave, do you have any comments?
I don't see it with your problems. I think it's a little better. One of the suggestions I made in the past. Is at the bottom of. These documents who put the date that they reviewed last update. I'll keep track of it, for example, obviously probably updated from standpoint of. Moving things and remote access to the.
I didn't hear that. Well, could you repeat what you said?
One, I'm okay and feel that probably move to go ahead and clarify and clarify some of our. Ways of doing our meetings.
Okay.
But the other point I was making is to add to the bottom of these. The date that they were reviewed and updated. Right now, you don't have the remote meetings of a site in the area. That's probably because he's haven't been reviewed since. Remote meetings came to them. But I don't know when these were last reviewed.
Okay, is, Paul, do you have any comments?
I'm not at the start.
Okay. So with that, I heard from three of us that we felt it deserved further exploration. So do we need anything else, Jim or Josie, to move forward?
Yeah.
Okay. Nick or Jim, did you have any comments on it?
Yeah, I'll just speak real quickly. I think that it, it sounds like we want to follow. The more of the Paul's bow model where everything stays in code and we'll get Josie and Jim working on that and bring you something to look at. It may be helpful. Planning Commissioner Ashby, if we can run this by you maybe before our next meeting. And so maybe they can set up some time to, to go over some proposed language and, and get your feedback in advance of the meeting.
That'd be great. Thank you. Okay. With that, we'll check that off our agenda and go down to our. With that, we'll check that off our agenda and go down to our director's report. That would be you, Nick, I think.
Excuse me, there was a revised agenda that went out on Friday and then.
Oh, okay.
That included an item for government regarding counter.
Okay, I'm sorry. I don't have that at my fingertips. So were you the lead on that? Okay, go ahead.
For which we just go chapter 20.24.04 requires our farmers to determine how patients be covered, leave this termination of power applications for the city and have its terminations all day. Since the adoption of the OMC 2.4, the city has seen an increase of the cross metals while the interpretation of existing code has allowed these maintains that full process period clarifying all products built and associated permitting basis should provide more protection for users of this section. Staff poses amending that the section of codes as described in the attached outline in your packet by clarification on all that cross metals and type payments and sidelines to determine an application of our fleet. Current language of the code and both languages to get included, the ordinance presented for the planning planning commission is requested to open over caring at the base set. Plan commission.
Are there any commission comments on that? Nick?
Jim, did you, I, the audio quality isn't great for us on Zoom. Did you say May 2nd or April 2nd?
May 7th.
I think May, the May meeting is on the oh yeah, the May meeting is the second, never mind, my apologies.
So what action do you need from, and Nick, thank you, because I have had some trouble on Zoom with the audio quality. And I apologize to Dave, that was the issue I had when you, when you spoke earlier. What action do you need from the commission to have the public hearing in May?
We are just introducing it at this point. So if you want to review it and give any feedback, we'll create it to me directly. But we intend on prepping an ordinance and those senior public hearing who may set fee. Tonight, there's no action, but it's missed or.
Okay, so we do not, we just ask you to move forward with the public hearing. We do not need to take action to make that happen. Okay. Okay. If commissioners have any comments on that, now would be the time to raise your hand. If not, we will have staff go ahead and notice and prepare for a public hearing on May 2nd. Okay, thank you. We will move on then to the director's report. Is that you, Nick?
Yeah, there, there's just two items. I'll go ahead and speak to both of them. I think the first item, you'll be getting an email from either Jim or Josie here in the near future, if you haven't already, about some PSRC, that's Puget Sound Regional Council, training for planning commissioners and elected officials related to the comp plan update process. And so I would encourage all of you to attend that if you are able. We do need to keep an eye out if, if you plan to attend it is, and Jim, I didn't look closely, is it at a fixed date or is it like a pre-recorded type item?
We can say this day.
Okay, so if, if a quorum of the planning commission are going to attend, we will need to hear that. We need to know if you're attending so that we can advertise a quorum at the meeting if necessary. So that was one item. Keep an eye out for that notice. The second is your key cards tonight. I believe that some of you had difficulty and I may have failed to relay this to Jim and Josie. I believe your key cards are set to work Wednesday through Monday evenings until 10:00 PM. And that's to give you access to get your packets from the date that they are published and, but not super late in the evening at, at City Hall. And so they only work certain days of the week. And I believe that's why they didn't open the door tonight is because we, on Tuesdays, they expected you to go in the front door. So I would say we can certainly double check that with our IT person who I believe is out of town right now, but he indicated he was trying to figure out whether, whether you needed access all days of the week and they're just trying to keep access to the building at night to a minimum.
That makes sense to me. Josie?
I'll just add that the, the PSRC event that Nick mentioned is on May 18th from 12.
Is that in person or is that Zoom?
Zoom.
You said May 18th?
Yes, from 12 to 13. On Zoom.
Thank you. So with that, we will ask any commissioners, when you receive that notice to let Josie, one of the staff members know so that we can appropriately notice a quorum if one is present. And with that, is there anything else for that we would like to share this evening? If not, it's real close to eight o'clock and we had two excellent presentations and a discussion and I appreciate your attendance this evening and would adjourn our meeting. So thank you very much and we will see you next month.